Called the September fourth, twenty twenty five, Prager Planning Commission meeting to order. First item of business is the approval of the July tenth minutes you have before you.
Move to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Oppose, same sign. They are approved. First item tonight is requested rezoned by Raymond Gutierrez at eleven zero ninety-four Orfa Road from A one to R two. I will ask if anyone has any public comment for this item. This is Orfa Road. Please approach and state your name and.
Hi, my name is Manager Guns. I live at eleven zero sixty-six Orfa Road, so the direct neighbor is to eleven zero ninety-four. We would like to speak against the rezoning. So first, we did sell the lot. We were the previous owners, and when we sold the lot, we were told it would be a single-family development. We have major drainage issues in this area, and we're worried that a larger development would exacerbate that. Our house actually flooded in April. And we're still trying to rebuild that. We have issues on our road. It's a pretty small road. It's gravel. And it took a lot of time to get them to come out and regrade it after a lot of rains. So we're worried that will exacerbate it. And also, everyone else in the road is A one except for one lot, which is R one point five, so not even R two. So we're worried that'll significantly change the character and the activity in the neighborhood. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Teresa Patton, and I own one one zero four nine Orfa Road. I am against it. It's a little country lane that's hardly a block long. We've already got way too much traffic on it from that place down at the very end. The mail, we don't even get our mail there. The mailman won't even come down. We have to go up to the highway to get it. School buses don't even come down because there's nowhere to turn around. It's just not feasible to put duplexes in there. And so we don't want it. The road is awful. And in order for him to do it, because the land slopes like this, he's gonna have to fill all that in. And then it's gonna run down on her property. And he'll have to cut all the trees down, you know, to do that. So that's gonna ruin our little country look. And the reason that I bought that place was because I wanted something that seemed to rule, you know, kinda country and everything, but it's close in to town. And so I don't want him to come in there and have a bunch of cars coming up and down that road. Because it, and to pave the road, which I'm told the city's not gonna do that. Because it's just a little line, lane to pave it. They would have to cut the trees down that run along the side of the road that help shade the road. That's part of the beauty of the street. And so anyway, I'm totally against it.
Thank you.
Any other public comment for Orfa?
My name is Apple. So this, and I live in eleven zero seven five Orfa. Been there for twenty years. Just like they say. There'd be, we wanna have a lot of progress. There is not enough room for a lot of people to go around there. It's just not enough space to work. They wanna have to cut a lot of trees and fix that. Fix a lot of stuff there. So I want to stay here. Both against that.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
Good afternoon. My name is Ramon Gutierrez. I'm the owner of the property. And I'm an architect. What I wanna do in that space is something that takes care of the environment. We don't wanna chop any trees down. That's my idea. The idea is not to put in ten, twenty units there. Maximum I would put in would be three to four, and I would live in one of them, so I would take care of it. It's right at the entrance of the space, listening to their comments. The idea is that nobody would go all, use the whole space, but just the main entrance. I wanna design something that is, that doesn't break the countryside experience, but I wanna just improve the area. That's really why I bought the property and what, that's why I wanted to rezone it, to just build something nice.
What's the acre term?
It's an acre. It's a little bit over an acre, so there's, it's a lot of room. And I mean, we wouldn't be going in the whole thing.
Just to break history, this is a Steven Heights subdivision, which the city inherited when we annexed in two thousand and six, I believe. Steven Heights subdivision was developed under Washington County many, many, many years ago. So there wasn't any requirements back then for improvement of streets, improved drainage, improved anything. It is a fairly narrow gravel road servicing those five lots. As Mr. Gutierrez says, his would be the first one that you would come to, so any development wouldn't be driving past the other houses. Mr. Gutierrez, I know there is a drainage ditch that runs kind of diagonally through that.
Yeah, and in the back, and in the back, I wouldn't, I wouldn't touch the, all the trees in the back. I would leave them as is.
You would leave that drainage ditch that's where that's well?
I would redesign.
That way the machine.
I would, I would, I would use, I would use that range, design something without impacting that drainage or redirecting the water. I would, I would still use it somehow.
So all of these other lots are zoned A one because that's how they were annexed, with the exception of this one. And the planning commission rezoned it R two. Probably about three years ago, for your video, hoping on that.
Which one?
This one right here at the very end was rezoned R two. It was an existing house that had an existing apartment in it. And the gentleman wanted to be able to rent that apartment, so he came to the planning commission four, five years ago and asked for an R two zoning, which was granted. Yes, ma'am.
Then he went farther than that. He took the house and developed it into duplexes. So there's actually five families living here across the street from me. And it's a nightmare because of concept. He comes in and out. There's a lot of traffic on the street.
If there is more than four, he may be in violation.
Okay.
But we would have, we would have to never comment, obviously.
Any other public comment?
Are you talking three or four duplexes, three or four triplexes, three or four quadplexes? Two duplexes. Two duplexes. Two units split together, two units on the other side. Four, basically.
So duplex for half acre.
Can you remind us, Larry, what, when we did the map, what do we have this?
Residential, I believe, and his, he would have the option even with R one zoning on one acre. He could split that into four lots and come back to us and do a four lots, but four lots and still build four structures, so.
Okay, then my second question is, four and R two, what is the max? Four? So the same thing, basically?
Four duplexes, yeah.
Four doors, basically?
No, no.
No, I need four flats.
Four or multiple fourplexes.
Eight, two, well, duplex, triplex, fourplexes, or single family. But the density max, right, the fifteen per acre. So I mean, potentially, you could put fifteen units on there. That's assuming you can put that on there. With the drainage that I know is there, people know that lot, you're not gonna be able to do that thing. It's, it's a fairly significant ditch that runs diagonal through the property. Chuck Wiley, do you have any comments? I know you know more about the drainage than I do.
And it's unique because it does have sanitary sewer available on this one. Absolutely available on that lot. It goes to there, so that was, it handles.
And that's the city's sipper.
Again, our job is.
I was talking here. If I look at the table up for R two.
Your name?
Greater than R three is not, greater than three is not permitted. Y'all were talking about four, but if you look at your table or the Prager Code or restrictions, R two, it says, greater than three is not permitted.
Not sure where you saw the code. The code changed in twenty twenty-four and it allows.
I'm not sure which one I'm looking at, but it.
It allows fourplexes, fourplexes.
Okay.
Anything over, the state considers anything over fourplex a commercial structure, so we, we changed it to where we'd go up to a fourplex.
Okay.
In R two zone.
Mike, can you send that in though, if it's miss?
Yeah, yeah, I'd like to see what you're looking at.
Yeah.
Okay.
Miss represent it online and we can check it.
So the question for us is, does it fit the area? There's no other multifamily outside of the, whatever's on the end in that area, till you get to forty-eighty road.
Yes.
Give away the one.
I wonder why we did that.
One in, isn't working.
It was existing. We were trying to make them, put them in compliance.
But his scenario to me is why I'm against this, is because we rezoned that on trust that he was putting in a apartment or using it as a single apartment, and now there's, or we're saying hold multiple. It's nothing against you. It's we.
No, that wasn't him.
No, I know. But in this rezone, it's the same scenario. You decided you can't do anything with it. We've now rezoned that lot to an R two, which gives.
If you sell it, then the next, next developer can do.
The zoning would stay with.
I won't sell it.
We can't hold you to that.
Been in this property for a while and, and I, it's my, we like my.
Again, we can't base it on that because you can make lots of promises, but that's not what we're allowed to do off of. So I don't think it fits.
I got a question. Yes, why aren't this the single-family homes? Why, why duplexes? I bought it because of, also for, for myself, but also to invest. So that's kinda like my retirement plan, to be honest. So I could get some income.
Any other comments, questions for? All of them.
It's, it's definitely conflicting, because I mean, you do, you, you have kind of set a precedence in a way by allowing something with a little higher density, even though it didn't, looking at it, doesn't feel like it fit the neighborhood. And then we got burned by it. It's almost like, then it's like, okay, well, we'll pull back then. You know, we made the mistake, we'll fix it. We will, we will do it again. As I was listening back and forth.
Larry, you're saying it's zoned, I mean, in that area, R one?
A one currently.
A one currently, but.
Because it hasn't been brought back to be rezoned since we annexed it. But typically, they refer back some type of a residential request, you know, the least dense they can ask for would be R one, and it allows four.
So comprehensive, did we leave it A one?
Typically, you don't leave property on A one. I mean.
Yeah, when we did the comprehensive reset, when we rezoned.
I believe it says residential. And on the land use plan, it doesn't designate between multifamily and single-family, just it's designated residential.
You know, another thing to think about that proximity to Highway sixty-two, would typically lend itself to a higher-density housing rather than something further away from sixty-two. You know, again, when people moved in there originally, which had a different feel. But so did a lot of people's houses in, in Prager area. And as we've grown, a lot of people get a different feel. But you would think like your higher-density homes would be located closer to Highway sixty-two and those with more land and the ability to have the country feel would be further away from Highway sixty-two. I don't know if the expectation is that that piece of property would always stay single-family residential, since it is a smaller subdivision right off Highway sixty-two with a commercial industry within a stone throw.
Directly behind it, though, is gonna be the estate lots, right? In that, on short credit.
Chuck, you don't have to order up to this. It's.
Well, then it's still there. The big ones still don't actually.
If you'd like, speak, come on up.
Yes, these are all big estate in this space here.
He was saying that it'll be the first house, but this gentleman on the end, his house is actually sitting there, so all these cars are gonna have to pass by his house because he sits on a corner lot as you can see on there. So it's not gonna be, he's gonna be the first one on the left. But this gentleman here, his, his the first one on the right, and it's a corner lot, so he's gonna have to deal with all that traffic. And it, it's kinda scary like when there's snow out there because the gas meter sits right there on the corner, and he has to put rocks around it just so nobody slides into the gas meter. So I just wanted to point that out. Plus, it will lower the value of our property.
Okay.
Perfect. Was, I know we inherited the road. Is there anything that the city has to do, or if you had enough residents on a road, does it change the city's obligation? Or is that on the developer, or how does that work?
If according to the city, we made a decision that it needed to be upgraded, that we are considering Charlie would be involved in some need, but I think there's very, it's a very, very low traffic road now. I mean, you could literally sit out there for an hour and not see a car, but.
It's not thoroughfare, so it means not, it makes it not a priority.
Is there four houses down? Four. So it's very low traffic and a duplex typically will add four trips per day per unit. So you're talking about additional sixteen trips for four flats or for two duplexes, which you spread that out, of course, but that is very minimal traffic.
I don't necessarily mind a set of duplexes, because I think they can be done really well. I think you see high-end duplexes all the time, and they're ideal for a lot of people and a lot of families. Is there a way this could stay R one and be used as a conditional use and we approve basically just the plan he's bringing forth, Larry?
Say that again.
Is there a way this could stay A one and we approve, like, so say he truly wants to just put two duplexes on there that he can do, keep it A one and bring it as a conditional use, and that way we can.
Not alter them.
Not for multifamilies?
Not in any one of them.
Like you said, R one.
He could, he could build four single-family houses on there, probably. But it would have to be split. There's probably a way to put four single-family houses on there.
Which would be very similar traffic flow
to, yeah.
and impact to that area.
And there would be more impact. There would be more impact to the ground as a single-family home versus a duplex.
Again, to me, it's not the four. I don't have an issue with the four on a quarter acre lot, four, four and two rooftops. It's what it can be if, for some reason, you don't develop this land. And that's the concern that'll be.
Well, Larry, I think what Berdus did to, what if it was all one? Could it be all one in condition of use?
Not, not multifamily. Let me verify that, but I, I'm, I'm not sure.
Because that way, like we're saying, you can regulate and make sure what the gentleman's telling you is fine with you.
Right, because I mean, there's nothing we can do about.
Nothing about in A one or R one other than single-family period. So you can't do conditional use. There are no other ways to, it has to be rezoned.
And if it's R two, do they have to have any kind of large-scale development that we approve, or is it, it's allowed, so it's allowed?
It's, it's considered the same as a, as a residential structure. You don't have to do large-scale residential.
That's where it kinda.
When you, when you get past four units, it becomes commercial, and then it's mandated that you have to do large-scale building. But that requires building to five acres. And then they have to do fire protection and a whole lot of other things, too. Anybody else?
I just don't think that duplexes fit with what's there, and what's going to be behind it. And, and I'm not, I was just putting it up there, but, and I know it sounds crazy, but I would rather see four homes in there than duplexes, because duplexes just don't be. It doesn't, it just doesn't work for him. It's been slow. I don't know. It's crazy.
Any other discussion? Motion, ma'am?
I make a motion. We deny the request for rezoning at one one zero nine four Orfa Road from A one to R two.
Second. Have a motion and a second to deny the rezoning request. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Oppose, same sign.
Does this go to city?
He could appeal it to city council.
And that's what happens on, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
So at this point, I mean, we've denied it, and should you do, choose to appeal it to the city council, I mean, you're more than welcome to do that. The appeal process is required.
I don't have that problem, Nigel. You can get any title within seven days, but if you wanna reach out to our community specifically, tell them.
Thank you. Thank y'all for the input. Item three, request to rezon by Matt Fitzgerald, Fitzgerald Construction at one one seven zero Viney Grove Road from A one to R one point five. Like this is where they demolish the old house.
It's no longer, in fact, the whole community of Clodwell. This is just like the other two that we have done on that stretch recently. A one is requesting that it be moved to R one point five, which matches up the battlefield subdivision on one side and Stone Crest on the other side. So it's the same exact zoning as you have on either side. And I think that he's here, he wants to say anything he can.
I guess I'd already assumed that, I guess I'd already assumed that it was residential because there was a house standing on it.
It was A one. Typically, you could build a house on A one if you had a minimum of one acre. Unfortunately, it's just under one acre. So it's like three quarters of an acre.
Yes.
Single-family home.
Single-family is.
So that would require an upgrade.
Any public comment for this item?
What is R one point five?
It is seventy-five hundred square feet.
It's, not anymore. It used to be eight thousand square foot. Basically, it's, it's the density that they're allowed to develop. So in this case, they can do, I think, six units per acre. I don't think Matt has any intention of doing that. I don't think, are you building a single-family house?
This is the single-family house that would have planned on putting on there. It's only gonna increase property value for your.
So we, we have three zoning classes. We have R one, R one five, and R one seven five, which gets pretty dense, but he's asking for the same, these would be similar lots to what Battlefield subdivision is calling this in.
No public comment?
I did get a text against this one. It didn't say why, but said that it was against both reasons on by me.
Again, this one meets the, what are land use requirement calls area.
It matches everything around.
Yeah, it's fine. I did use the home there, and I doubt that was sitting there.
That was a quite a pile of a lot of things. Yeah, say a public comment.
Okay. There, there will be a YouTube channel on this. Y'all can all watch it.
I think the fact that, that nobody is here to oppose that our neighbors realize that it's going to increase their value here and so.
I live on Viney Grove as well, and for a structure like, they might not get against the for a structure like that, that fits in with our area, if, if a private home and the, the style of it and everything, and it will not introduce a lot more traffic to an already congested area on a very small, busy street. And so I'm, I support that. So.
Thank you. Yes, come on up, please.
I'm Alan Gardner. I live on fifteen eighty-five Viney Grove Road, and I'm so thrilled that he bought that place and tore down that house. And not only does it fit our area, it makes it look a hundred percent better.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Anyone else?
Why the R one plans of R one?
Yeah, it's just simply because that's, the, the entire thing was built out of R one five lots. He could have done R one. The other two lots that we just rezoned, we did R one fives, so it just made sense.
What options does it open up for someone? Let's say the house falls through. He sells it. What does the next builder have the option of?
Possibly two lots.
So he could just build two houses there on a smaller.
We already looked at it with several builders.
That one's matched exactly what was there.
Two lots is the most he could get.
Still couldn't do multi-family. I have a motion to agree.
Okay.
I have a motion and a second to recommend reapproval from A one to R one point five. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Oppose, same sign. Can you go to city council?
Not much of a name.
Forty?
Fifty.
All right. Item four. Request to rezon by Stephen Vandemere for team development from A one to R two at one four nine eight Viney Grove Road. And public comment, who wants to go first?
She's got a football game to be on, can't wait.
Actually, the address on that house is fourteen ninety-six.
Fourteen ninety-six. Which house?
I'm sorry. I thought you were, I was.
You're just a typo on.
I'm done. I was like, what?
You didn't start by three minutes, did you?
I had that.
Well, I'm sure, Cheryl West, I live at one four seven eight O West Road, which is right off of Viney Grove Road. And I wanna applaud you all. I've served on the county planning board for many years, and it's not always easy work. But one thing that we always looked at was if a project was compatible for the area. And the project that's, for this is not compatible for the area. I think y'all stated that with this gentleman's. Could you go build one house over there? That'd be great.
Sure.
But this is not compatible for duplexes and apartments. And Viney Grove Road is very congested as it is. As y'all know, the houses are right on the road. If someone's getting their yard work done, they have to park in the street to get their stuff. And during school hours, it's really congested. And so how many people per day did you all say come out of one house, Larry?
It depends on a duplex lot rental, typically four or six per year.
Okay, and I don't know how many are, were they planted.
For a single family, that can be as can trips, but.
Okay.
Those are all national averages.
So I, I, I know that I could say growth is coming, but growth is here, and I just want us to plan wisely for this. I think Avani Grove is more of an agricultural area, and I know it's headed out there. I don't have to like it, but it's coming. But please, please consider that this is not compatible for our area. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next.
Hi.
Good afternoon.
I'm Stephanie Holstad, and I own seven twenty Carroll Drive, which is in the Battlefield subdivision and backs up to this property. And I'm, my biggest concern is, yes, there's gonna be a lot of building behind there, but the drainage, how the drainage will affect the area. When I first came, I bought my house in two thousand and nine, and the city came through a couple of years after and improved that drainage out there. But my house, my lot is pretty big, and there were several times before the drainage was improved that water came under my fence when we were getting a lot of rain. So that's my biggest concern, and then also probably multi-housing behind this. This isn't really a great idea either, but the drainage, like, how would that be addressed is my biggest concern. Because I think everybody that's been here a while knows what it was like. But that's all I have.
Thank you.
I'd like to mention that as well.
And I think I will address them and then, some of the topics that are brought up, the drainage, different things. I mean, drainage is looked at if it is developed. the drainage, uh, different things. I mean, drainage is looked at if it is developed. I mean, you know, that's one of the things that the city looks at as part of the large scale. So what we have to look at is not so much drainage or those problems, infrastructure, as much as it does that development fit that area. And I mean, that's what we have to look at, just trying to save some of your words and time for, uh, other comments. Anyone else?
My name is Alfred Roach, and I live at fifteen ninety-five Vine Grove Road, which is right across from that property. She probably stood in my yard and took that picture right there. Really took it.
Actually, it came off.
My driveway matches the driveway to that, and I'm, I'll go with what Ms. West said. A, a set of apartments or duplexes or quadplexes or anything like that does not go in that area. There is nothing but residential houses, Battlefield Estates, Bell Mead, Stonecrest, everything on that end of town is, is all, you know, residential. I moved there in oh eight. And I live right beside that ditch that floods all the time. So I, I know there's ditch problems, but I don't, I don't think cutting that up and then putting a bunch of uh, apartments or quadplexes or duplexes. I don't know if they're going to use the same driveway. They're going to come out right on, you know, my driveway all the time. I don't want to look out my front window and see duplexes when all I've got to look at for all these years is that nice looking field and all them trees and stuff. Of course, they took out some trees when they made that ditch bigger. But, uh, I'm, I'm highly opposed to it. And I hope you all understand that there's plenty of apartments and stuff over here on the other side of town, and, and this end of town don't need that. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I'll go to Matthew. I hate public speaking with a passion. Uh, I'm Sherri Kelly. I live at four oh four Denver Lane, but I own property further out Vine Grove Road. So I travel that road every day when I go to feed horses. And, you know, the, the biggest concern is just, just that does not fit in that area. Uh, people complain about the traffic on Vine Grove Road and, you know, the, the issue with the schools, you know, and it's just not safe. And so by reason, I feel like it would just open up, you know, the possibility of, you know, three-story, you know, duplexes, apartments, what have you. You're also going to have a large turnover in apartments. Most people stay in an apartment maybe three years and then, you know, so you've got a constant, you know, different people. And I just feel like it, it would just, it's going to drive down the property values, um, in that, you know, in those neighborhoods, those are established neighborhoods. Um, and you, you all have built a wonderful little dog park back there, you know, and I, I feel, you know, and it's just not to be prejudiced, just feels like this would open up, uh, you know, more vandalism. When you have like, you know, several apartments and duplexes and whatever, with people moving in and out and whatever from the area. But, uh, the, I had, I'm going, uh, but, uh, yeah, this is, like I said, this is, is, you know, it's connected to so many established neighborhoods. You've also got an overlook from the Battlefield Park. And when you look out across that valley, you know, it's even with the houses there, you, you've got such a perspective of the valley that you go in, anything that's built probably north or west of, you know, of that outlook, you know, you put up a three-story, you know, duplex or apartment or whatever, and that's what you're looking at. It just, that whole area that just doesn't fit. And, uh, you know, but, but yeah, the road situation, I just feel like that would be terrible because it's so public, you know, traffic, especially the school. And then you're going to come in there and put several apartments. You're going to put, you know, you know, maybe four hundred people or whatever in on this small plot of land that, or, you know, they have to go through those school zones, you know, and it's just, it just doesn't seem like a good situation. Yes, that's it.
Thank you.
Hi there. Again, I'm in the Sherri Castillo, and I'm at fifteen ninety-five Vine Grove Road, right across the street um, from there. And I am strongly opposed to multifamily dwellings on that property. Um, that is not the area for it. Uh, we are in our home with the hope it'll be our forever home. We love Prairie Grove, the community. Mixing a multifamily dwelling rental unit into that area will totally ruin the aesthetics. It'll ruin the, the whole feel in the neighborhood, or as she mentioned, you're going to have people moving in and out constantly. If you look at the multifamily dwellings currently in the city, they're not well-maintained. Um, they usually have grills and bikes and plastic chairs and everything out in the front. Um, people are walking around to get to. We don't want to look out and see that. And then if you look at four quadplexes, there are sixteen units with probably two cars per unit. That's thirty-two cars. That driveway where the Browns are comes right up, as Alfred said, into the driveway. It's hard for us to get in and out now, but traffic is tremendous down Vine Grove, and it doesn't go thirty-five mile an hour, seventy, or sometimes faster. So, so we do not think that a rental type property is the right place for that area. Um, wouldn't be opposed to three single family homes, whatever, in that area, but I just don't see that that's benefits the city, nor does it us. There is no value to the city. There will not be enough cumulative revenue from anything, property taxes, sales taxes, or anything that will outdo what it's going to cost the city overall to maintain drainage, water, sewer, roadways. I don't see the benefit for it. It will also lower all of our property values. Because most people don't want to buy a home and look at rental duplexes, quadplexes. I mean, that sounds kind of mean, but there's no need for it. There's no businesses around this town or close to this town that require that we have multifamily increase in our town. Fayetteville, Rogers, Springdale, I understand, but not in Prairie Grove. It's a small community. It's a well-known, well-liked community, and we should try to plan to where that growth helps us. So keep in mind that, um, we're, we're concerned about the change in law style. We know all of our neighbors that come down the street.
Thank you. Anyone else there?
I'm not, uh, I'm not going to belabor the issues that are brought up. I agree that there's water issues out there, drainage issues. There's traffic issues that have to be considered. My point about this piece of property because of those issues is how do you rezone until you've seen what the developed project was really going to look like? Where you can delve down into, does this development project solve the water issues? Are they dealing with their, the water issues the way they should be dealt with? To just rezone it and then leave it doesn't feel right to me. Without having worked a number of major projects until I can look at what you're actually going to do and approve what you're actually going to do, I don't know that I can vote for rezoning. That's my main comment about it.
Name is Nick Donohue, Carroll Trail, Battlefield Estates. The one thing I've been hearing and seeing from everybody, and that's the infrastructure is just not there to maintain facilities, closed housing. Multi-housing will also give Prairie Grove, I think, a bad outlook, because if you look across the field from where that trailer house is, is this ridge line out here where they do the Battlefield, the closed line fair, the reenactments. And if you're out there on that ridge line, you look over, you see multifamily housing with whatever they bring with them, sitting out there, it just doesn't give us a good outlook in this town. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'm not going to go over too far into that area. I'm going to make this quick. I oppose it because of all the reasons stated already.
Anyone else?
Nora Heath, that seven eighty Carroll Drive. My backyard has a tangling fence, and it's almost exactly in the middle of the south side of that field. And I know I agree with everybody on all the things that they have issues with. But you have to consider too that we have wildlife. And where are we putting them? We're pushing them. We have a lot of wildlife that come in through that field. And when it rains a lot, it does flood. It's like a lake. Even with the ditch that we don't like to call a ditch at our house, we like to call it the creek. Because ditch just doesn't sound good. But, uh, I think if you consider we have nutrients, we've had, we even have a swamp rat. Do you know what that is? You have any idea what that is? We have eagles, we have deer, we have fox. And they all kind of stay in that area and back and forth to, to the hills away from people. If we add more stuff, where are they going to go? I saw today that, um, on the news that a man was working on his truck on the side of the road and was attacked by a bear. So who's in the way? Was it the bear or was it the man? How far did we push that wildlife before they started retaliating? Just something that no one has really touched on that I feel like is important to consider. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'm Jeff Bates. I'm the engineer on the project. Um, these are not apartments. They're not your traditional, like you think of, four places with a parking lot in front of them. I can kind of show you what they're thinking, and they're not very dense. Uh, they're two-story, high-end town homes. Uh, we laid them out, so they're a hundred and seventy feet away from the nearest house. What they look like. This is how that, you know, power lay it out. Y'all can see that. It's six acres, so it's, uh, seven units per acre.
Seventy-six.
There's seven units.
Uh, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it's forty-four years.
Forty-four years.
It's maybe forty-four units on six acres. Eleven.
Yeah, I know, but I mean.
Larry, was that on the quarter, so third acre, or is it under quarter?
R one point five zoning, they can do six units for, so if they did single family, traditional, they'd do sixteen.
And what's like, uh, Battlefield, Battlefield Estates and Bell Mead?
All those are R one.
Yeah.
And then the back part of Bell Mead is actually R one seven five.
Right.
The front is R one.
R one point seven. Did you say R one point five is six units to make? What's R one seven?
We hit away with that.
We don't, we don't rezone anything on R one seven five.
Okay. I know, but R one point five, it is forty units.
Y'all would, y'all would keep it then.
It's time every second, but everyone's talking, which y'all missing from important news because their accident that's not this, and it's R one seven five and one five. All stuff that y'all want to know as neighbors to the property, we're talking over each other. So not only the, the commissioners can't, uh, the developer, if y'all not giving, uh, let, let me just summarize real quick. They're asking for R two, obviously, which allows them to develop duplexes, triplexes, fourplexes, as well as single family. We cannot just tell a property owner, we can't develop these land. We can't do that. His other option, if he wanted to go with traditional single family, would be to either zone it R one five or R one. R one five is actually what is in the front part of Bell Mead, but that part is even more dense than R one seven five. Battlefield on the other side is R one five lots. So if he asked for the traditional R one seven five, which would be compatible with the neighboring lots, uh, they could do six units per acre, so they could fit thirty-six single family houses on that six.
And with the current configuration, it would be forty-four.
Forty-four tubed doors.
We're allowing more space, and we, we pushed everything to the middle, so it would be far away from all of the neighbors, because a lot of times neighbors feel like two stories, you know, they're looking down on them. So it's, they're far away. From what I've heard, there's really, it doesn't sound like there's anything we could do to change to make it happier, at least everybody happy than that, so not do it. And let, let me just, there's going to be problems with the roads. There's always, you know, the only way to fix the roads is to get more rooftops, to get more money into the city, to, you know, just grow and things. It's horrible. We hear this all, you know, all the time in North Arkansas. It's just, we're growing so fast and we can't, didn't build the roads first and then get the people there. It just hasn't been working that way. We're always behind the gun.
Let me address one other comment real quick that I heard from, I don't know, I think Mikey might made a comment. Um, the reason they have to rezone the property first is because no developer can afford to do, hire engineers, develop their property without assurances that they can do it. So they've got to get the property rezoned first before they can hire engineers and do a development plan. So that's the reason why rezoning has to take place first, because they don't have any assurances that they can deal with what they're going to do. They're not going to go out and spend three, four hundred thousand dollars on an engineer and then find out the city won't rezonate. I mean, that'd be foolish. Yeah, yeah, that's how much Jeff made.
Yeah.
One question on that. I was looking through the, saw the report. I can't find anything about density.
Okay, I'll, I'll show you where that's at here in a minute.
Okay.
So basically, that, I mean, that's why we have to rezone property before they go. Once they start developing the property, they'll either do it as a large-scale development, which a commercial project or a large residential project with multifamily would be, or they do it as a subdivision. So there's two ways to do it. Either way, they have to hire engineers. They have to prepare drainage studies. The drainage study is what we're going to look at and send to our own engineers for confirmation. And that's what's going to tell us whether or not it will drain, it'll drain properly, if it'll affect any downstream properties. We look at all of that when we do that. But not only does an engineer prepare that study, but Chuck Wiley will send that to his engineer to look at their calculations, and they will confirm whether or not there needs to be corrections, changes, modifications made to their drainage plan. And they look at streets, they look at drainage, they look at water, they look at sewer, they look at everything.
Development is very frustrated with City Prairie Grove because we use a secondary engineering. What we do with these reasons. And so delays the development, but if there's a little bit more reassurance that we use an outside source to make sure that, and no one's announced what they say if they need it.
That's the only, it's the only job this particular engineer does for the city. We don't hire them to do any other work. They're only here to verify.
I think it's important for y'all to understand, I'm supportive of the commissioner's job, and you've heard it for a while, a lot of times, for us, what fits scenario. The other thought of it is, in my opinion, it's a lot better to hide it. But now that it's, I'm just saying again. So I, I was on the guy who did, if you want to look at cow pasture, you have to buy a cow pasture, horse pasture, so it never gets developed, and you're responsible for that. Old one, but every city, not just the city, excuse me, A one for every city, not just City Prairie Grove, is just a holding pattern to, for development. And so then it's the commissioner's job to decide what fits, the R one seven five, or R two, or R one. So the, the question tied as far as rezoning, that's why I was asking y'all to kind of quiet down, just so you can hear that part of it. Because then then the city has so much legal right to determine or stop a development. It would be no different than. Cause then then the city owner has so much legal right to determine or stop a development. It would be no different than, than you buying land and then I'll say, I'm sorry. You're just gonna have to sit on it if you want a thousand, because we're not gonna let you develop it, assuming you have a better than. And so municipalities around, around the nation already knows that. So then it's the commissioners to try to figure out. The work with the developer and work with the neighbors, figure out what fits that area. And so when they're asking questions about R one, R one five, R one seven five, R two, it's sort of the commissioners. Sign for what it is. The developer may sit on that plan for years. But he may develop it, quote unquote, tomorrow being, and just has to figure out what the commissioners believe is deemed for that area. So he knows what direction to move in. Am I, am I correct on that, Lauren?
I have a couple of comments aside from this in general. It's also our job to ensure that the city has homes for people who can't just afford a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar home. So while we yes, all want a twenty-five hundred square foot home or larger on an acre. That's essentially eliminating any young folks who are just starting a family or older folks who can't afford that or can't maintain that property. So again, it doesn't have anything to do with this necessarily, but it is our job to make sure that we have mixed residential opportunities in Prairie Grove. To support not just a single type person moving into Prairie Grove. That is not our goal, is to make the whole city look exactly the same. So just so you know, that is also our job is to make sure that there are options for everyone. Now, whether it's in the right spot or not is also our job. But I personally will never stop at well done duplexes because I am not that far from not being able to afford a home in Prairie Grove. And your starter homes in Prairie Grove right now are starting at two hundred and thirty thousand dollars. That's a heck of a payment for someone who's twenty-one years old. In a fifteen dollar an average job. So I just want to mention that, that it's not, we think who the limbs or whomever is gonna move into these duplexes. It is giving an opportunity for young families, older folks, single individuals to have a place to live and to call this place home as well.
And these are nice. They're not low income, they're not hood homes or anything. They're hopefully price out the whooms, I guess you could say, but. I don't know, if I'm the engineer, I don't know, but they. Well, I don't know. I don't know the answer to that. We'll have to ask the developer, but.
And that's honestly not.
But if it makes you, I mean. Give you an example of the developer, I stopped in Farmington today and took those pictures and those are four years old. Those have been there for four or five years and they still look really good and new. Well maintained.
You like, no, this.
I would like.
Say your name.
My name is Morgan Menard, uh, Richmond. I am a local real estate agent, so I have some, kind of some conflicting, um, deals with this. I've heard everybody, I actually live at seventeen fifty-three Charismatic. I deal with the school traffic every day. I take an elementary school, um, student there. So I'm hitting it in the morning and in the afternoon. Um, there is quite a bit of traffic in the area, I would say, especially for it being out in the country. One thing I would like to see in Prairie Grove is more affordable housing. Um, it's hard starting out here. We moved here eight months ago. Uh, we lived with my mom for the first five months we were here until we could afford to move into a home. And, um, you know, I, I ran thoughts with my husband a couple of times, you know, tiny homes. What are these gonna be? Are we looking at two bedroom homes? Are we looking at, you know, three bedroom units? Wha- what are we looking at there? And, you know, when we say affordable housing, are we actually bringing the affordable housing to this with this development? It's kind of what I would like to know. I think they're beautiful. Um, they definitely don't match the cookie cutter that Prairie Grove is now kind of become accustomed to. I think Prairie Grove is losing its uniqueness that, um, it was once known for because of the subdivisions that are being built in the area. And how much they look healthy. Um, I hate to see that. You know, it's just like the McDonald's over there, that was once a cow pasture. You know, I know every city has to grow. And I think growth is, you know, what helps our schools. That's what helps a lot of things. It's one of the reasons why we moved to the area. Was because it still had this small town vibe. I'm not necessarily against the project itself. I really came here tonight to figure out what we were gonna put there. Um, kind of what the ideas with the city were, what everybody wanted to think and say about it. So I kind of gathered that from everybody's opinions. But at the same time, is it going to provide the affordable housing that I do think Prairie Grove so desperately needs? I deal with clients every single day. They can't come here because they can't afford it. You know, even these houses, I mean, eighteen hundred dollars a month to live in a three bedroom house. Um, that back home, I lived on, what do we have, honey? Three acres of land and a thirty by sixty shop with a three bedroom home. Not nearly what it costs up here. I mean, this is, this, you know, it's one of the reasons why I came up here with the job that I was in, but at the same time. I do think we need to be providing more affordable housing. I hope that this project does that, if it does pass. Um, they are beautiful from what we've seen, so can't really say that I'm, I'm, I'm kind of biased right now. I'm, I'm not for, but I'm not against it either.
And, and people always want assurances and we a hundred percent understand why people do want assurances, but it's, it's almost impossible nowadays, days to have assurance. Even a single family subdivision. We can't assure you what kind of house is gonna be on that subdivision, because the state just changed law this year. But there is no, cities cannot regulate anything as far as residential housing now. If somebody wants to build a three hundred square foot tiny house, a residential lot, a subdivision, there's nothing the city can do to stop them. If they want to put a storage building and call it a mother-in-law house in the backyard, they can do it now. The state changed the law and it's allowable. So the, the state has recognized the need for affordable housing. And they've really taken a lot of the regulation away from cities being able to regulate what goes in on a building lot. So. Even, even current subdivisions now. Uh, I, I foresee, because we get calls all the time about tiny houses, I think you're gonna start seeing tiny houses pop up on residential lots all over. I mean, there's nothing we can do to protect it, but everybody'd like assurances, but we're not living in a world of assurances anymore.
These are fifteen.
Say something about that affordable.
I bought mine in two thousand and eight. I couldn't afford my house right now if I hadn't bought. Everything in Northwest Arkansas, including Prairie Grove, is going through the roof. It ain't just here, it's all over Northwest Arkansas. You go over no home or up in, in Missouri and it's a whole lot cheaper up there. And, and over there. It's just Northwest Arkansas. Fayetteville's building, I'm, I've worked for the city of Fayetteville. And Fayetteville is building, building, they're tearing down one house. And putting up six apartment units in the same footprint. That is just, sometimes it's not sustainable. But like I said, to, to touch on what she said, if I hadn't bought my house right now, I couldn't afford. So thanks.
Thank you.
So what, what are the, what, how many bedrooms are there? Fifteen hundred square feet and three bedrooms and three baths. Okay, so it's a pretty decent size. But I'm, I'm a, by the way, I can get here, as, as, I'm, I'm also looking. We're talking about affordable, we're gonna start out rent at least eighteen hundred dollars. Same as if it was for a house, a mortgage payment. It's just what it is. Now, the rest of that is, do I think that. Quarter places go in that spot? Personally, I don't. I think, I think houses are a real big one, in my opinion, because that's what's around it. So that's, that's my fault. So. I, I'm not saying, they look great, I, I get that, but if we're talking about affordable. Those are gonna wind up being the same rent payment as a mortgage payment would be, I hope. I'm just.
That's again, like our house, that was in a three bedroom homes, go up to twenty-three hundred dollars. Nobody's gonna be able to afford that and still live in the city. Everybody will move out.
True. The, what's driving this is mostly all over Northwest Arkansas is the price of land and the construction cost. I mean, it's hard to do. Single family homes and make it cash flow. Sugar Mitchell's blowing up there, you know, those are small lots, but that's, you gotta have small lots or, or nice townhomes.
Were not, I guess maybe a question. I'm probably gonna regret doing this, but, uh. If he rezones it to an R one five, that is then thirty-six.
Single.
Single family homes, so thirty-six driveways, which is not much different than forty-four. And we have no say. In him being able to do that or not, because that fits the zone. So we're kind of stuck in a hard spot here because. That to me, do I think duplexes fit here? I don't know, not really, but R one seven five in the back of the other one. Helps I, um, their argument. But I also don't know that thirty-six single structures on that piece of land. Is all that ideal even, either. And so I think you're looking at either forty-four units on one, two, three, six, uh. Ten rooftops or thirty-six rooftops. That's your options. That's what we have to think about, just so you guys know. That's, that's really hard for us because. Ultimately, the same amount of people in and out. It's if they're built on a single family lot or a four plus. Yep, yes.
Hi, from an infrastructure perspective, as I mentioned when I was talking earlier. You would have a minimum, a minimum of thirty-two cars in that area, in and out, in and out the Vine Grove Road. At the same time, just one house over, you've got Bell Need and then a few houses over Bell Need again. That already is significantly, and that is all cats adjusted. And people come in and out of Bell Need, they don't stop at the stop sign. It's hours coming both directions. There is no way that. Well, gardeners and everybody that lives in our area, us especially, in line across the street from it, could ever get in and out. We have to back in now. And didn't even get in and out of the driveway because of the traffic. And then again, it doesn't go like thirty-five mile an hour. Now, these people zoom down that street. So from an, I'm an engineer myself. And I'm lucky, I work from home, so I got to deal with all of that. But there is no way that that area can hold that capacity for a little piece of land. And I don't agree that the city would have enough coming out of that to sustain what they would have to support. I mean, the benefit would only go to the developer, the owner. From what they would be able to get. I understand people buy property, they wanna have an investment. You know, that's good, but isn't it in the right place? My opinion is no. And so forth, but there is just no way it can sustain. Then you've got the one way out, two ways out, over to get on sixty-two. If you have to go sixty-two now just to get to work, for most people in our area work anywhere from Fayetteville up to Fayetteville. It's dead stop. So county roads, city, I mean, the state. There, I mean, how would that be handled to manage that traffic?
Uh, I hear what you're saying, but we can't control to an extent. What he does with land that he already owns and directs. So I mean, yeah, thirty-two minimum cars here. In a thirty-six single home lot, which is what he is able to do, that's now thirty-six minimum cars. So he is allowed to do either. Uh, or we can say, you can't do what you want on that land, which was what Mayor Park was saying, then brings on a lawsuit for the city.
I understand, but my point again is that infrastructure in that area does not support additional, that volume of additional traffic. Bell Need is.
Man, can I ask you what infrastructure you're referring to, because?
The, the roadways.
Okay.
There is no way that, again, Bell Need is just one house over from where that cars would go in and out there. And there is no way that we can have. Additional traffic, that volume in and out, in and out.
As you know, as an engineer, we don't look at the number of cars, we look at the number of trips per day when we're doing traffic studies. And so we look at the number of trips per day. Typically with this type of rental, we're looking at four to six trips per day per unit. Single family, actually, we're looking at seven to ten. And the reason for that is these types of units are usually, many of them are rented by two people, a couple or a young couple. They're usually not a whole family living there. Whereas single family houses are usually a full family with more cars, more trips. So four to six trips per day times forty-four roofs. Um, you're looking at maybe two hundred trips per day, spread that over your entire day. You're only looking at a car coming out on that road, maybe once every two or three minutes. It's not like this big insurgent traffic. Certainly during periods of times in the morning, in the afternoon, traffic does pick up everywhere. And, you know, we know that in school traffic. Vine Grove Road, we get a lot of complaints about Vine Grove and Bush and the traffic. But the traffic's only bad for about twenty minutes. And after that, it's not a problem any other time of the day. So when we talk about the traffic on Vine Grove Road, it's usually very short-lived, this school traffic, work traffic, and then get afternoon traffic.
I would encourage you to put another meter out there, because it's not just during school.
We, we've done a lot of traffic studies on that road, actually. We've had a permanent traffic counter account where at the, not the high school. So we know what trips per day yearly is. There has an increasing interval, but it's up to about three thousand trips per day there.
Okay, well, I, I, I hope I, I stayed in my case. I just, like I said, I just don't think it's there. I don't think it would be advantageous to the environment as far as, as she, as she was talking about, or to the community. To have multi-going units in that area. And I think it would be even more congestious.
Thank you, ma'am.
Well, um, a part of, I'm the developer, um, just to answer a few questions on the rent for that. It'll be three, three bedroom, two and a half baths, some of them will actually be two bedroom, two and a half baths. The way we figured it out, as we do our own civil and our buildings, we're looking at about fifteen hundred dollars on the three bed. Uh, two and a half bathroom, uh, units across. The reason, I understand that one and a half or the R one, one point five, the point seven five. But we're looking at this as the more subdivisions we build, the more pastoral land we take up to. Someone started talking about wildlife too. Um, it gets further and further away from where everything is centralized in the city. Um, you don't have, you know, your elderly people living all the way out in, in outside of city limits. To be able to afford to come back to town, to do whatever they need to do in town. Same with, same with, um, young families. So I think diversifying it, especially with the school right there too, is good. Um, our property maintenance will be done by a Prairie Grove, uh, landscaping company. Um, that was one of the, I just wanted to touch on that. Um, and again, people can't afford a twenty percent down on a house these days. Um, this will all be rentals and maintained, maintained by us. Um, on, on all the, the mowing, the flooding on it. I know it's not, I'll don't vote on the flooding, but the flooding, just so everybody knows. When we develop something, there's a retention pond that's designed by the engineers to either allow the same amount of water flow that goes off of the property. Or lessen the workflow. So you won't have increase of workflow going into the ditches. Um. It's also easy for us to connect on the sewer on it with. And obviously when we engineer it to, to, with the flooding, we kind of raise the property up as well. That's what, uh, Mr. Bates will discuss or will engineer. Um, do y'all have any questions for me? I'm listening.
I think, again, same thing with the, the previous item, because I mean, you have lovely plans. But we rezone it. And you decide to sell it, then we still are held accountable to what we zoned it. And the next developer may come in and not put something like this. He may, he may come in.
The most you can put in is a fourplex.
Correct, correct. I mean.
That's worst case scenario.
Right.
Basically.
But I mean, it's just, like I say, you're, you're planning this environment of, of beautiful neighborhood and everything. And sounds good, but then the next, you know, like I say, we, we rezone it to what it could be and it doesn't come in to look like you're presenting it, you're promising.
I understand that too. I mean, we drive, we bring our kids past Vine Grove two or through Vine Grove to the school. I mean, and I take pride in this. That's why I went and bought the property. I want to invest in Prairie Grove, my town. To be able to put something nice that people can afford. I understood y'all's, y'all's comment as well. I mean, that is a problem. We see it all over. So I think the more we grow, the more diversified we have to be in these scenarios to be able to accompany different.
A- accompany different style or different type of people.
So what are you in line with, do you think thirty-six houses?
Thirty-six single-family dwellers.
So it's thirty-six dollars or forty-four?
See, and that's where I'm at right now, and I know, I know it's hard to wrap our mind around. But where it's at is not what it's going to be.
Right.
So what we, as a community, have experienced so far. Is not what we're voting on keeping or getting rid of. What we're really looking at or voting on. Is do we want thirty-six single-family houses? Or do we want forty-four units? In a townhouse-type style? That's, that's really what we are looking at, I can't think about what it is right now, because it won't stay that way. And there's nothing legally we, we can do, and that's what I think Mayor was trying to say, there's, there's no reason for us to sit and go. That's nice right now, why wouldn't we run it? That's not our thought right now, it can't be, because that's not the choice we get to legally make. Our legal decision. Or the thing that we're actually talking about, and this is what I'm trying to get it dumbed down to for me, because I'm conflicted, is. Thirty-six single-family homes that someone quote-unquote cookie cutter, someone quote-unquote. The traffic problem, some will quote-unquote, what green space do they provide in that subdivision, because that's usually what I ask for. Uh, and then you go to the other side, it's forty-four cookie cutter rental spaces, you're getting cookie cutter either way. You're getting individual yards one way, you're getting maybe there's the green space somewhere. And this one, it feels a lot more like the smaller backyards that your dogs can. Leave a mess in, and maybe your kids can feel something to say, like an outside playplace for a little bit. But you do get the drainage here on the single-family homes. You still have to have the drainage in large scale and all that. Like, I'm just trying to think, what is our differences between these two? And it's either a single-story, single-family homes, only thirty-six of them. Or these townhouses, forty-four. You're talking eight rooftops. You're talking sixteen cars. How many times a day, which is confusing, who's gonna get out? Uh. But that road's gonna change, that property's gonna change. We need to go ahead and get that out of the discussion. For us. It doesn't, it doesn't serve the purpose.
Here's what I think. Long-term. Twenty years, thirty years, what are these gonna look like?
To me, the same as a.
I would receive residential home. Somebody made plant roots in the town. And see these go in, it's just my opinion, or at all, it's gonna be one of the, one of the other. This or all going fine.
And I think we need both. I think it just needs to be in certain areas, but I think, I think I agree with you a little bit, like, we need both. Because like, my kids can't move back here right now. They're living in little bitty apartments that cost as much as a mortgage does in Fayetteville, it makes no sense.
I think you need to be careful too, when you just start making. Gross generalizations that all apartments are gonna be not well-maintained, and the reason I say that is because. One of the subdivisions we're talking about here is Bell Need. It's probably seventy-five percent rentals. And we've had discussions at City Hall that very few of them are being maintained very well at all. In fact, we probably have more property maintenance calls out there than any neighborhood in, in the city. Because they let their grass grow up, you know, this high, they don't weed. Uh, it's because of rentals. There are good rentals, there are bad rentals, there are good single-family homes or bad single-family homes, but I think, I think you just can't make generalizations.
So a lot more of it for me is like for, it's like what does fit that road, that community, that is more where I kinda go to. But then the other part of it is. There's also really big houses out there that would have said the same thing about Bell Need. And this and that, like, they would have had to complain. You know, but then again, you keep giving more and more.
My head. How many entrances would there be possible versus there's only one now?
Oh, the two entrances.
There's two.
You can look at it on the plan.
Just turn it around.
Even if it's a single-family.
I guess that'd be the same.
There's no way to have you, is there? You have thirty units. You have forty-four, it's the same.
Yeah.
So it wouldn't change the number of entrances.
Can I just say that I live in that? I mean, we've all, like, we're just saying the same, that if you're gonna have to decide the, the single houses that fit the area that have the big places.
You know, and like, we do some of the PUDs. And we mix single-family homes, and we mix two places, and we mix apartments, even in the one that we did with. Copper Ridge, but that's all planned development. And I think it's easier for us to, to mix things at that point. I think in established development, it is a lot harder to do.
And don't forget, PUD does allow you to approve a certain style too as well. It does a lot, then then we want to.
That's what, I agree with Colin on the. For the most part, homes hold. Their exterior better, but a single-family home, like Larry just said, we don't have any control over that anymore. They can do. Any sort of structure that they want, unless it's a PUD.
It can be, it can be a subdivision, it's all a monument nowadays, I mean, we can't control it.
Which sometimes is unique, and I've been in Vinnyville, and they have some of those apartments that are. Got like the chicken house in the middle and gardens and everything, they're, they're kinda cool, I wouldn't bother there, but they already leave.
I got a question for the engineers or developer, one of the two. This road here continues on, correct?
Yes, yes.
Now, this, this land back here, there's just an old house back there that's already built, right? Is that, is that potential? I don't know if that's legal to ask, is that potential buying, you know, something that y'all want?
I, I reached out to them to get his permission and it was impossible. When Teresa gives them the answer back, um, but for him at the back end, we'll take the road up there. But if he wishes to. To develop that all. Connect to it, he'll also have his utilities.
The property is good for connecting, but it's what we always.
You can't land block it, but you couldn't, you couldn't not allow access to it.
Yeah, no, he's had on that property. On, on site, he has, he has, he might have been the.
So you do have an even to somewhere else.
No.
No.
He's gonna have to come in from the park side, because I don't have four acres on the park side. No, he's got an east, he has an east line that runs down power line. The power line right there, we cannot go anywhere close to the power line. He's, he's running between the fence. And the power line that goes all the way back to his property, that's what he's, he's been.
Well, that's a large-scale thing we can, once we get to that point.
Well, that's what I was gonna say. Would it be smart to table this, we've done this a few times before. Get discussion from State Council as well, and then give y'all a better idea of what.
Well, here's my thing, if, I need, if I'm gonna put single-family on there. And I have to put something that's small and affordable to build throughout my retirement. I can afford, I can do these and still have bring something or bring something in, I don't wanna build something that's the same as every single thing around there. Or do something that's a little bit different, that's gonna change the neighborhood a little bit. Not in a bad way, in a good way, it's not gonna drive down property value. Um, and be well-maintained. So I mean, I'm, it's hard for me to outrun the numbers, it's hard for me to bring in, if I wanna bring something in. Similar to the alleys that's around there. Yeah, I mean, I can, I can do it, and it don't, the, your rent's gonna be twenty, thirty hundred dollars. Can't do it. I can build it, but then people ain't gonna be able to afford to live there.
This isn't a fun statement to say either, but that's not, we can't take that into consideration.
No, I know, I'm just saying, like, from my, I've run both sides of the alley, or on, out of this, or the single homes. And the single family, I can, single family is gonna cost a lot more for residents. If I, to be available for the level.
The side of that, that would be important to us, that's. You're getting less door fronts available for people that need housing.
Yeah.
And you're getting, you know, a, a hostile or option. It doesn't matter whether he can afford for us, it matters what are we providing for our community? For people to come and stay, but also still protecting the feel of. The area.
Right, I agree with Colin, I, I'm also gonna say this. We have our community right here, and they've spoken.
Yep.
And, and so if we're saying that we're doing this for our community. They're, they're here in the inner, in my thing, and that, and I just don't think people are scoring, I mean, it's just.
Can, can I ask why?
I just think single-family, single-family house fit better here.
What type of single-family home? So if it's a, basically, a Schuhr Mitchell home or something that. I mean, we build them all the time. But. Those will fit in better there look-wise than, uh, something different that's closer to a school. Um, on that road.
I think so, yeah, I mean, when it's the number of doors from forty-four to thirty-six, it just, to me, it just fits better.
It's, it's personal opinion.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I, I just like to understand the two that way.
Because I, I think by a school, sometimes density's not a bad thing. I'd rather the kids be walking from there than walking from way down the street. But, and also, there's a lot more traffic, in this case, it's not that much more traffic though, but would be a lot more traffic that kids are walking in and. You know, we, there's, there's those accidents all the time you're inviting. Uh, but you're not actually talking about a lot more traffic on that road. With this, not, not, not. I would love to see the number, I don't know if it's enough to make the decision based on traffic. I think it has to be based on whether it fits. Yeah, I think it has to go back to that. Always.
Yeah, and, and I will, I will say, because I think anytime there's traffic, it should be brought up. But I know every time we deal with any development, and I've been doing this for a lot of years. The first thing that always comes up is the traffic's already there, it's gonna be, you know, unmanageable. Hudson Heights is a real good example, I remember the neighbors were afraid that, you know, Bush Street's already going on traffic. Hudson Heights is just gonna make it ten times worse. I drive that road five times a day, and I seldom even see a car in the plaza, I mean, you just don't see it, and it's full now. So. Yes, there is traffic, but it's not what you think it's gonna be, just because there are a hundred houses in there.
Here's my, here's a question too, so like on. On a multifamily development on town, townhomes, if it don't fit here, where does it fit to then? Does multiple, or the townhomes have to be built completely outside of city limits, because everything in Prairie Grove is basically. Uh, subdivisions. So when do we say, okay, it fits, and there's a need for more congested. Housing in town? I mean, is that a valid question, I mean, how?
I think my personal opinion is, like when I was talking about the first one we voted on. It, the proximity to Highway sixty-two seems to entice higher density. That one we denied, but I mean, I made, it made sense to have a higher density closer to the highway for me. Uh, pre-planned housing. We've approved higher-density housing in pre-planned. Development, so we were okay with it there. Um. If you're downtown in the neighborhood area around, you know, the new food truck park and. The ballpark, we've been okay with it there. You know, we, we have been okay with it in certain areas, in certain situations. Um, there are these places in Prairie Grove, uh, what is it, right off of Mauk? Right on the north side of Highway sixty-two, a whole development of it on the right, Wagon.
Wygant Springs.
Wygant Springs? What's, what's the north-east corner of that?
You're talking about Copper Hill?
Uh, it was between Copper Hill and Wygant Springs.
Wygant two.
Wygant two, very, very similar to that, we, we, we did allow that there too, like, we are bringing this into our town. So like, to deny it in one spot, we're not saying we're denying it everywhere, we are allowing it. I think some of it. Like, the downtown stuff is not that appealing to me looks-wise, but it's been here forever.
Wygant, Wygant Springs is all single-family. But Copper Hill, you approved it with a mix of.
Okay.
Both.
I feel like the.
Copper Hill did theirs as a PUD, some of it's, uh, multifamily and some of it's.
What was Wygant two, do you remember?
It's all single-family.
It's all single-family, yeah. It's like fifty-foot lots.
Yeah, the only, the only modification we made on Wygant two was that we required them to have thirty-five footprints.
Okay, so still, it's still single.
And I think Stefan, the, the holdup is. All the way around this is R one five. And that's. Our job is to, does it fit, and so if something is already zoned in R two for a higher density. Then it's a no-brainer to put it in, where we're getting caught up is. These. Regardless of size of homes, it's still rezoned in R one five. And that's, and R two does not fit with that, so if you were.
But then I also have a question, back to you on that, is when I rezoned my thirty acres on sixty-two. I wanted to rezone it the same as whatever, what it was around it, or had my property in with the night. I had to rezone it to something else, because whenever was thinking I was gonna put, you know, a car lot in there.
We did that one as a.
That was more of a section. Right, we just didn't want the big heavy commercial. Right on that one.
Y'all, y'all, y'all tabled it at first, and then changed, but it was the same thing, half of the property, or part of the property was.
Touching road was coming through.
Was something the same as everything touching sixty-two, so. In all fairness. I had to change my prop, or change that property, um, I go, I couldn't zone it the same if y'all changed it, so. Hang on this.
I think that was the difference. Was you were commercial on one side, it was residential and agriculture on the other, if I remember right.
The city, the city zone did commercial. Um, portion of that because of the road, and then it was eight-one, and we, I can't, Larry, do you remember what we rezoned it?
Three of these used to.
Yeah, something like.
But that way, that it would like, kind of like more of a transition.
But I mean, that's almost the same as, not the same as this, but again, it's like, hey, you know.
I think that's an example from that one, I don't think that one does it as well.
Yeah, no, but I wanted it the same as that one, but it was denied. So.
Because the mixed use B two does allow for pretty much everything in that, you would find. It just didn't allow for like the heavy.
But so does the, that's what everything on sixty-two was zoned as, they can, anything can be built.
Yeah.
So I was touching that for those properties, and part of my property was zoned the same way as against sixty-two. I'm wanting to zone the other half the same as those, and it was denied.
The piece that you're talking about too, what touched it on the other side of it? Just to remember, so you have commercial touching it on one side, what touched it on the other? What's something?
The road, oh, it was R one, whatever it was.
It's R one, and so that's where the issue came, so you did have it on one side, you didn't have it on the other, in this case. And I'm not saying I'm for or against, right, I'm just.
I'm just trying to understand it.
In this case, you do have an R one five established on two of the.
Four seconds.
And then the opposite side of the road, uh, against the park is what? R one, and then the other side. That, that's behind the four acres is R one seven five. So he has three. Different bordering zones there. Which, you know, averages, your R one five would be the average of that. Rather than the R two, the R two would be the most dense thing in that area. So again, it doesn't fit, it's not transitional, that's, that's where I'm saying, like. Try to look at it from this, where your other property was like, heavy commercial, residential. So what we did in the middle was. Commercial without heavy. And so it's more transitional, not quite, but it is.
Then again, how do we weigh in, you know? But we put a single-family in there, but again, a lot of the opinions was too raised by yourself, is affordability.
Yeah, and then it goes against that part of a hundred percent.
Like, I'm trying to bring something that's gonna be affordable. To y'all, for this area, to make it work, and it's, it's like. And it's, it's like, well, we know we need affordable, but we don't want it, we're gonna go with some.
We just got in that spot, it just doesn't fit.
See, I, I look at that spot and I'm like, what would be unique in that area? You know, that, that does seem like what I was saying, like Benville, you'd be in the middle of a bunch of homes and all of a sudden it's an apartment complex, which normally get denied. But then they made it into something that had like sustainability features. And so you have a higher density housing, but you have some sustainability features, and I'm not saying put it in a garden or solar park or anything like that, but I'm saying. That stuff is there, and I think that's how they get it approved, right? I think that's how the town kind of says.
And we talked to Larry too, to connect on the easement in the park.
Yeah.
That'd be great for the families.
That would be great for the towns, especially with the yard sizes, would they be smaller or bigger than single family?
It'd be actually bigger.
Yeah, but what will be, I started saying, but what would be like in a person's yard, like where they went? Would it be a bigger or smaller yard, like square footage lot, it would still be a bit smaller.
But they won't have fencing, it won't be fenced in, it will all be a beautiful long strip between these houses. It's gonna be maintained to where they can enjoy that outside. And obviously, we can put rules stipulations in, you know, things not laying around, hey, you know, we can't just park cars in the street or. Leave bicycles laying around or anything like that, it's gonna be cleaned up, that's why I'm renting these so I can control them.
True, the only negative with that line, and I agree with you, so I love it, the only negative is when you don't come anymore, and that's where. We have to really be careful, just like with the gentleman a minute ago, it's like. When he doesn't live there, or when he still lives the next person, and we should think that, we should think people get approvals. And then put it on the market with something else, and so that's where it's hard, and that's not your fault. Uh, I, I, I don't mind something unique, uh, this to, this to me is not unique to me. In that area, this would be sticks out. The problem is, usually if I try to tell somebody something doesn't work, I would love to have a solution to get them to, and I don't have one. And that's the problem here, like, that's why I was like, what's, what's working in other places? What happens in cities that have tons of traffic and have its walkability? What can you walk to? He said, you can walk to a party, that's, that's a huge benefit. You can almost walk, you can walk to the school, that's a huge benefit, now they couldn't walk to get food, couldn't walk to a restaurant. And so then we could say, well, can we start allowing stuff like that out there? Cause that would, for all the homeowners that were there, I would think would say, no, absolutely not. But at the same time, like, those are the amenities to provide that make that little area its own little community, so. I don't know, I go back and forth, now this, like I said, this, this doesn't look like something that I'd like, that'd be really cool. This is, like, like, the townhomes are not the feel that I get for that area, but at the same time, I agree. Cookie cutter homes are not the answer either everywhere, and Prairie Grove is overrun with a lot of similar housing options. And again, I'm not giving solutions unfortunately.
I mean, that's fine, and that's, you know, if it's not the look that, that the y'all want. I mean, we can make it, you know, we can add more stuff to it, it's just, I wanna keep that, that spot. And accessibility.
Just, this is not what we're supposed to talk about, like, looking at the large scale of it, I hate looking at the backs of all the houses on Vine Grove, that's one of the ugliest things, I think. You know, looking at the back of the houses, but I don't think that's where we're talking right now, I still think it's. What do we rezone it as to get the feel, it's not what does the large scale look like to make it work, right? I could, I'd be wrong here and I'm addressing y'all because we're the ones deciding, like, is that, I mean, I, I don't wanna go too far in that way.
You're correct. You can think into the launch, you can give you a concept, but not really addressing launch, launch, you just address him.
And if we want to control that, like what he's saying, the only way we have to control that is in R two, right? You can R one point five, we do not.
And I mean, another way you could grow it is, is if they wanted to pursue this as a putt as opposed to rezoning, they could do a putt zoning. And then basically, whatever you approve is what they can build, they can't deviate from it, so it's another option.
What, what allows a R one point seven five, one point?
We, we cannot rezone anything to R one seven five since two thousand twenty-four, it's still in the code, but we can't rezone any new property.
And R one point five?
We can still do R one five.
But we did the number, then it'd be about thirty-six.
I mean, normally, normally, single family too have two cars.
Yeah.
We, we require parking for three cars per unit, but one of those, one of those car parking spaces can be in a garage. So basically, you can have a garage, you still have to provide two parking spaces.
If you did R one point five, you wouldn't go get that many houses because of that huge ditch. And they also moved the uh.
Gas line.
Gas line as well, took a lot of, of the space, so to compile it to six acres, which you can't develop it on.
The bad, the bad part of that would be that goes back to supporting the less traffic. Stuff on there, but then it also makes it nearly impossible to develop.
Yeah.
If they brought it as a putt, we've seen this in some other neighborhoods. Could they do an X amount of townhomes in the back?
They can do whatever you approve, but what I would suggest to them is they bring it as a concept before they spend a lot of money on it first. And make sure there's consensus for that.
So before they do that, what do we feel is something we would be more comfortable with in a putt? Or do we just go ahead and deny this and move on, let that be a conversation for another night, and it sucks for those that have to wait? But like, what are we comfortable with?
Right.
On that, I mean, we can stay here for another three hours talking about it, I'm excited at the moment, but. No, I, I like, I personally like the putt idea a little bit. And like when you said, like, I'm gonna go into this, this will be the answer to me, uh. But like some single family houses in the front to fit to fill the neighborhood, with some of your higher density stuff in the back, we've done that before. In the Copper Ridge area, uh, so that it didn't affect the surrounding neighborhoods. Um, he can maybe get to that same density with some unique planning, maybe. And it not look or feel too different than what's surrounding.
We can also say in that scenario, every mouse has to be red brick, brick with a white door, even though. Even, I mean, that's the nice thing about. But if a concern is homes that are not built to withstand time, again, not you.
In Copper Hill, what they did is they actually submitted uh.
Design.
Designs for the different units that they were gonna build, they were approved as part of the putt.
I mean, I wanna build something decent, so if it takes us to bring it to y'all to approve it, and we play around with it, I'm all open for it. But as long as I can just, seeing it's hard to make the, or what I wanna do, I'll build a single family. Don't, don't, not, or misunderstand me, but it's not why I bought that property.
Yeah.
It's for, because I know, I mean, we've got friends that, you know, and families, they can't afford it. So we wanted to bring something in that's a little different.
Are those same as story, I don't remember, are they two stories?
Because, I mean, I can tell y'all, if I would hold for it, and I wanted to have everybody pay twenty-three hundred bucks a, for, for a house. I'll say, well, then let's do one, one, or R one more time. That's all what, that's all that's in my heart there.
I just.
This gentleman over here had his hand up first, if you wanna come up and address. I'm loud enough, um, I'm not opposed to affordable housing in Prairie Grove, I'm all for Grove, okay? I think they look great on the bypass, you come into bypass, you see those, you would go, wow. Uh, I just don't think they need to be there, I, I, I'm, I live right across the street, okay? So I've been there since oh six, um, I'm, I'm glad you're investing in Prairie Grove, I'm not against you, okay? I'm against where you're putting, I think the bypass would be awesome.
Yeah, but you gotta.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm not, maybe it's not right on the bypass, but I mean, something to where you're not going right in the middle of a neighborhood. And you're still giving affordable housing, which is what your goal is, it sounds like, and I'm all for that, okay? I, I think it's needed, I own a title company, I do clothings every day, I know how much it costs, okay? But I really think that where you put this, I think it's a great idea, I think they're gorgeous. But I think where you put it means something, and I think, I think it'd have more of an impact, people could see it when they come into Prairie Grove versus. On Vine Grove Road where we've all been there forever.
I mean, to, to your question or to your question, it's a lot of times what we look at to develop something is. It's not always in the right spot, or there ain't always the right spot available on sixty-two, I mean, I'd love to put it on sixty-two. But a lot of the times on sixty-two, that's more for your commercial as well, for your businesses to come in, so it makes it hard sometimes. When this came up, we actually drove by it and I was like, something unique in there would look beautiful, and we're trying to find the middle. Middle ground here, hey, how can we please everybody around the neighborhoods? Plus have something not really typically affordable living, cause those don't, are normally built really poorly. Or cheap looking, but we still wanna have affordability with decent looking uh townhomes in a beautiful neighborhood.
Now, I just, I just wanted to, you're talking about all these developments that you've done, so I have to assume that you still don't mind all these developments that you've done. So once this is put in, we lose any control over affordability. I mean, when you set your rent prices, that's one thing, the next investor is going to come in, and if they want to raise the prices, so maybe. So we lose the, the argument of affordability, and also then you're saying, well, we're going to maintain. When that passes on to the next investor, they don't have to honor that. Those are things we can't really consider.
Yeah, I mean, I get it, I, to answer your question is, I can't tell you that, hey, I'm gonna sell it in two years. I may keep it for two years, I may keep it until I have to demo, or demo everything out and build something else there. I can't tell you when I'm gonna sell it or if I'm gonna keep it forever, so. That's also, I can't control if I, if someone wants to buy it or what they're going to do, I, I can only hope.
Keep them, maybe lose the argument of affordability, because we have them controlling.
Well, I mean, if, if you, if you out price people, they're not gonna build ramps, you're not gonna have bulldozer. Our goal is, you have to have, when you have ramps, you gotta fill the, fill the doors, so if you price them out, then you're not gonna have ramps. So, there's a happy medium on that too. I don't have any more questions, we're open to anything, we're just, I don't have a question.
I was, I was seeing that they did. I mean, this is one of the tough ones, cause you're right in the middle of a lot of differing opinions, but you're also in the middle of a lot of different needs in that area. With school, a park, houses, an asset park, a state park, and a public park. From the community, so you've got a lot of things in that area that they're trying to mix. I do like trying to give a solution.
Maybe we can't find solutions now.
I mean, your, your options tonight are to approve, deny, amend, or table, and.
So the amendments for your, your holdings on that way, well, well, a dozen weeks and everything.
If you've got a developer back there that says R one seven five doesn't do him any good, I'm not sure.
But an R five then opens to a putt, right?
A putt can be in any zone, actually, we have a special zoning for putt, so it would be rezoned this putt, and. Uh, you can't really do that till they.
They want it.
They should, they should probably submit that as a concept before they come back with a rezon request. There's no sense spending a lot of money without knowing.
So we'll, it's, are we there, like making it an R two or not going to?
If a putt is something they're interested in pursuing, uh, maybe an appropriate thing tonight would be a table. And let them come back and let us know if that's what they wanna do and we can pursue it, you, I think. To research it, but the putt has a separate zone, I think you could amend it to the putt zone. But I think it's something they would need to explore and make sure that that's an option to them.
So if we're doing that, one, one, we pay your care, don't think you're gonna have to come back anyway and, and, and then rezonate it at that time.
Well, otherwise, we have to go back through the public notice. Process, if we, if you deny it tonight, we would have to go back through a new public notification. Uh, posting letters, certain letters have to be sent out, start that process over again as opposed to just abandoning it. Just simplifies it.
And it's hard, hard to amend into the putt without talking to the developer.
I think you would need to see a concept plan.
Hard to, we admitted to the one point, but we're pretty much saying that's actually what we're comfortable with, and we're done with it.
And then you've landed the single family.
I guess that's a question for them. We, I mean, we have, we can table it and do this again. We can amend it to an R one five that matches everywhere else. Or we can have y'all bring us a concept plan as a putt and approve it that way.
So the putt will just add some single family to give more of the same neighborhood feel, but we could still put density at the back of it?
That's technically, and then we get like design, say, or ultimate.
A putt gives you more flexibility, you can mix and match, you can, you can do unique things on the putt. You can't do with a regular subdivision, um, but basically, it's, it's a set plan when you submit it. And if that's what they approve, nothing can be deviated when you build, so whatever you build has to match whatever you submit.
It's safe for us because it stays with you, so we don't run the risk of something happening and.
You sell the property, the putt goes.
Right, it's, it remains zoned as it is.
Well, the question, I mean, the multifamily or single family, I mean, that's, whether, I mean, the putt's gonna be a combination of both.
Yeah, see, like, I think if I go, if, if, if I was thinking putt and they agreed to putt, I think my expectation would be. The closer to Vine Grove, the more single family home, I personally would like to see it further off of Vine Grove. And like, that needs some green space there, not because kids can play in the road. But because it like, as you enter and leave the park, you know, it's not a bunch of back of the houses. It is weird on Vine Grove, to me, seeing all the houses, like literally right across the bitch, like, it's tight.
Well, I think Stefan alluded it, you know, you're not gonna see anything that they develop on this property very close to Vine Grove Road. Cause the city has a big wide drainage with that, and then after that, the gas company has a big wide gas system. So anything they build is gonna be sent back by ways.
And so I like that, and if you can do something, maybe.
And you can do a pretty landscape on that frontage, the gas, where the gas is basically to the ditch. Give it a little bit of that look.
And even pulling in and out of the property as cars stack up there, being able to see up and down or down. I don't know, or fire, that helps any at all, sure, it does a little, but. Um, and I. I don't even think I care if the single family homes are up front, as much as I do getting it off of Vine Grove and. Thinking the majority of the housing that's denser in the back, for me. The homeowners everywhere around there would probably disagree.
Like your friend you like?
We want mixture in there, is that the dog time? Try to help people, right?
I think we're just trying to find the best. It's gonna be something, yeah, and if we get control on. Design standards, that's always good, in my opinion.
But when you do that, we're all pretty much thinking there's going to be some multifamily in there. Because if not, it wouldn't be able to be feasible to develop that way. So it's either no, I want it to be an R one five, I want it to be single houses, and then they can just deal with it. Or it's I'm willing to compromise some density to get control over everyone. Which sounds scary just as much for a builder, I think, because you can price one of those out real quick too. You can price people out real quick too.
If your first three acres though, or two or whatever, road frontage look the same as what is on both sides of it. Then in the back, if you've got four quadruplexes and can't see, then I think that, to me, that's fine. I think as long as the front, the visual aspect of it fits the landscape of the developments to each side, you get both. I don't know that duplexes all the way to the road fits the look on both sides. So that's why this to me seems like a good in between, but I don't know if that's good for y'all.
Are you looking at the whole picture or just part of it?
No, sir, it's my job to look at the whole picture.
I own that ten acres for meters, I own four now, the back side is one way in.
I understand that.
Okay, I can't get in through the park side, so what are we planning as far as if you guys build of getting through? Landlocked, man, whatever.
We cannot landlock you in.
Okay, am I getting a road from the park side?
That would be in the development, but we, at the end of the day, there will.
How am I gonna get a water line through there from the city? So how am I gonna get a rope, I couldn't get a water line.
No, you know, she didn't, she didn't say you're getting a road through there, she didn't say that.
I said you will have access, there will be a, we can't landlock you in, there will be a.
Let me say, yes, basement.
Yes, it has an easement that runs right by, it's actually a beach. We'll imagine a shuttle kit falling, falling on the warning maps, it's easier to do there. Between the top lines here and this.
I thought that's what they said, well, he has.
Yeah, yeah.
And he has a city water.
He certainly, no, he doesn't have a city water.
He does, okay.
And we also ran here with the. Get temporary, we keep it grounded, it's getting too long, it'll be a mess.
Pressure all the way to the end, these are problems.
I got you.
So it'll actually bring you to the border of this problem. It'll actually, the volume is probably will actually go up.
So it's like the water and. That makes sense. Available, there's no way we allow.
He already has.
Are we on table?
I think it would probably be wise to table it and let them figure out what they exactly wanna ask for. To me, there's been way too much discussion to approve a R two tonight, and so.
I don't agree with that.
Yeah, in order to not prolong it even further, if we table it, that gives y'all time to go back to the drawing board. With either R one five developments or a HUD.
I'll get with Larry on what HUD.
Yes.
And and before we do that, we gotta all agree that.
Right.
We're kind of thinking that the HUD would work. If you don't think it is, you can just say, I'll be honest with you, I don't think the HUD would work.
I think that's a good compromise.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm not just.
Yeah, you know what I'm saying, I just wanna hear, I just wanna hear for the sake of purity, and so we all have that expectation, like, I would be willing to work with the HUD or no. I honestly think one point five is where it needs to be so that we kind of know where to go. Cause I think she's gonna say HUD, I'm probably going HUD.
I like to raise the idea of houses in the front, Vine Grove, your higher higher density in the back, I I'm I'm okay with that.
We can also ask. Only if you call it volatile states. We'll bring this up, I will bring the city council as well for discussion during future planning on the fifteenth. And we can get some more, cause no matter what we decide here, that also goes there. Uh, to get some input from them as well, if you guys wanna come or if anybody from the crowd wants to attend that as well.
Stefan, I can make some time for you Monday morning if you're.
I mean, we're open to anything, I mean, we just wanna.
How how about somehow, but also.
Jeff, I'll send you the section on the uh development.
A motion to table.
A second.
At a second, any further discussion? Here you go, I wasn't embarrassed that. Same sign, we are tabled.
I had one more, Adam.
Yeah.